Council President, we are now live.
Good morning, everyone. We're gonna get started. This will be a relatively long session. We take care of the people's business. So I want to go through a few things as required by state law. Currently, it's required that the following announcement be made at the beginning of every remote council session. Due to the current public health emergency, city council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stating meeting notice that was published in the Daily News Inquirer and Legal Intelligence earlier prior to the meeting and can also be found on phlcouncil.com. I now note that the hour has come. And clerk, please call the roll to take attendance. Members that are in attendance will please indicate by saying present. Or whatever you may choose when your name is called. Mr. Decker?
Councilwoman Bass?
Good morning, I am present, thank you very much.
Morning.
Morning.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Good morning, everyone, I'm here.
Morning.
Councilman Don?
Morning, Council President and colleagues.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gattia?
Councilwoman Gattia, I see you.
Her screen is frozen.
Okay. You can assume she's there, we can all see her, so.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Good morning, Council President and colleagues, I'm here.
One second, I'm gonna say it now.
Councilman Green?
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, looking forward for a good session today.
Morning.
Councilwoman Jim?
Good morning, colleagues, good morning, Council President, I'm present.
Morning.
Councilman Heenan?
Good morning, Council President, and good morning to all of my colleagues.
Morning.
Councilman Johnson?
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues.
Morning.
Councilman Jones?
Good morning, Mr. President, good morning, colleagues, good morning, viewing public.
Morning.
Councilman O?
Good morning, good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues.
Morning, sir.
Councilman O'Neil?
Good morning, everyone.
Councilwoman Parker?
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues.
Morning.
Councilwoman Ginona Sanchez?
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and all council staff, thank you.
Morning.
Councilman Scola?
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues, present.
Morning.
Councilman Thomas?
Good morning, everyone, I'm present.
Council President Clark?
Morning. We clearly have the steps of harm, so we're gonna get started. We're gonna start with invocation. So despite the great need, there will be no invocation today, but we will, however, observe a very brief moment of silent prayer for our city, its leaders, and citizens during the current public health crisis. And I would also like to say that we would like to recognize and include in that moment of silence our prayers for our good friend, most importantly, and our colleague, Mark and his family. Mark, you are truly loved here, brother, as part of your political family, and as you go through these trying times, trust me, we are with you every step of the way. So we really appreciate you, man. So.
Thank you, that's appreciated, thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Now, observe a moment of silence. Thank you, thank you very much. And our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting on Thursday, June 18th, 2020, and the chair recognizes Councilman Scola.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that the Journal of the Meeting Thursday, June 18th, 2020 be approved.
Second.
Thank you, it has been moved and properly seconded, that the Journal of the Meeting on Thursday, June 18th, 2020 stand approved, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, Journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for lead of absence, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, on behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for lead of absence today.
Chair thanks to Councilwoman, and our next order of business is communications. And Mr. Decker, can you please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications that you may have in your possession?
To the President, the members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Home Code Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendations of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 200082, 200144, 200145, 200146, 200148, 200158, 200160, 200161, 200188, 200260, 200345, 200346, 200349, 200350, and 200355.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolution. The clerk will please read the titles of the legislation that is being offered today by the members.
Councilwoman Parker offers an ordinance amending the Philadelphia Code to add a new section entitled "Good Parking Jobs" for Philadelphia Review Committee, to provide for the creation of an advisory board to consider the quality of jobs and opportunities for workers in the parking industry, and the potential to make adjustments to the parking tax, including with respect to the goal of reducing the parking tax to 17% by July 1, 2022, based on review of working conditions in the parking industry.
It will be referred to committee.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson? Offers one bill and one resolution on your behalf, Mr. President, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing RPG Hamilton LLC Co. (Kerr, Radnor) Property Group to construct on and maintain both existing and proposed pedestrian scale streetlights at 440 North 15th Street.
Heard committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to enter into a lease with Avenue North Renaissance's tenant for certain properties located in the 5th Council-Mannick District.
Heard committee.
And Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson's on behalf, a resolution authorizing the Committee on Children and Youth to conduct hearings to investigate the status of children in Philadelphia during their post-COVID-19.
Day's calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to conduct hearings to investigate curriculum realignment, opportunities within the school district of Philadelphia to ensure preparedness for post-COVID-19 career opportunities based upon Philadelphia's labor market forecast.
Today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution calling on the United States Senate to adopt the funding enhancements to the federal medical assistance percentages, FMAP, as provided in the HEROES Act, House Resolution 6800. Council President, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson would like to be recognized for a motion on this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules of council so as to permit consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and probably seconded, all those in favor of the motion, he's taking the power by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that will be on today's calendar.
Councilman Heenan? Councilwoman Jim offers two resolutions, as follows. A privileged resolution authorizing City Council Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings to review the city's response to protests in support of ending systemic racism in policing and of the Black Lives Matter movement, and to provide residents with a form to share their experiences and make recommendations for safer and nondiscriminatory policing.
Today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution urging the US Congress to appropriate funds to sustain the US Postal Service and to ensure the Postal Service continues to function as a universal public service. Council President, Councilwoman Jim would like to be recognized for a motion on this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Jim.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules of council so as to permit consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and probably seconded, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have it, and that will be on today's final passage calendar.
Councilman Heenan offers one bill and one resolution as follows. An ordinance continuing the Mayfair Business Improvement District beyond its termination date in an area that generally includes both sides of Frankfurt Avenue, from the north side of Harbison Avenue to the south side of Sheffield Street, and certain blocks of streets that intercept that portion of Frankfurt Avenue, and for which the Mayfair Business Improvement District Incorporated, a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, is the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district.
Heard committee.
And a non-privileged resolution initiating action to continue the Mayfair Business Improvement District beyond its termination date in an area that generally includes both sides of Frankfurt Avenue, from the north side of Harbison Avenue to the south side of Sheffield Street, and certain blocks of streets that intercept that portion of Frankfurt Avenue, and for which Mayfair Business Improvement District Incorporated, a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, serves as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district.
And that will be referred to committee.
Councilman Johnson offers one resolution on your behalf, Council President, offers one ordinance on your behalf, Council President, entitled An Ordinance Amending Chapter 19, 1300 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Real Estate Taxes, by providing that if a taxpayer enters into an installment payment agreement authorized by Section 19, 1305, the city shall not place a lien on such property unless and until the taxpayer has fallen into material noncompliance with the agreement, and further providing for the removal of any lien that has been placed on such property in connection with an installment payment agreement.
Heard committee.
Councilwoman Ginona Sanchez offers one bill on your behalf, Council President, entitled An Ordinance Amending Chapter 13, 100 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Rates, to provide a discount on water rates and charges for landlord properties rented to low-income tenants.
Heard committee.
Councilwoman Sanchez offers, on her own behalf, a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Erica James as the first woman and person of color to become dean of the Wharton School at the University of Pennsylvania.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committees on Appropriations and Finance to hold hearings to consider an independent analysis of the business income and receipts tax structure and rates.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings to consider a program that provides broadband internet for Philadelphians to access quality schools and quality jobs.
Also on today's calendar?
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to continue to hold hearings to assess the city of Philadelphia's efforts as coordinated by the Managing Director's Office and Human Services Departments, to prevent and treat abuse, addiction, and disease related to the use of opioids.
Today's calendar.
Councilman Green offers on your behalf, Mr. President, a non-privileged resolution requesting the mayor to return to Council Bill Number 200298, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Bond Committee to Sell Bonds at Public or Private Negotiated Cere, to provide funds to various capital municipal purposes, providing for appropriations to the sinking fund commission for the payment of such bonds, authorizing a remit to provide credit or payment liquidity resources for the bonds in connection with issuance of the bonds, and certain other actions for the purpose of reconsideration by the Council of the vote by which said bill passed Council. Council President, Councilman Green wishes to be recognized for a motion on this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. President, on your behalf, I move to suspend the rules of council so as to permit consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and probably seconded, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, motion passes, and will be on today's final passage calendar.
Councilman Don? Offers a privileged resolution honoring the Pennsylvania 30-day fund for providing immediate financial assistance to forgivable loans to small businesses locally and statewide during the COVID-19 crisis, and encouraging Philadelphia's small businesses to apply for the program.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Fiscal Stability and Intergovernmental Cooperation to hold quarterly hearings that include monthly reporting requirements to discuss the fiscal position and overarching social impact goals of the city, including and as related to the fire year plan and reporting requirements set forth in the Quarterly City Manager's Report, and is submitted to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority.
That will be on today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the City Council of Philadelphia to create a special committee on the future economy of Philadelphia to develop policy and hold hearings to promote economic competitiveness, expansion, and opportunities for the city and all Philadelphians. Mr. President, Councilman Don would like to be recognized for a motion on this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules of council so as to permit consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and probably seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and motion passes, that will be on today's final passage calendar.
Councilwoman Gattia offers one privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless to hold hearings on the impact of COVID-19 on homelessness, evictions, and residential foreclosures, and the city's efforts to combat homelessness, evictions, and residential foreclosures.
Today's calendar.
Councilwoman Bass offers a non-privileged resolution calling on the Pennsylvania General Assembly to reverse the legalization of the sale of consumer fireworks in the state of Pennsylvania. Mr. President, Councilwoman Bass wishes to be recognized for a motion on this resolution.
Absolutely. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules of council so as to permit consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
Second.
Second, it's been moved and seconded multiple times. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, that will be on today's final passage calendar.
Councilman O offers an ordinance amending Section 10, 403 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Prohibited Conduct by prohibiting the use of consumer fireworks and providing certain penalties.
That will be, I'm sorry, Mr. Decker, was that privileged?
That's an ordinance, Mr. President.
An ordinance, so referred to committee.
Mr. President, there are no other bills or resolutions being offered by the members today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Here it is still ringing from the fireworks. Our next order of business is reports on committees, and the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan, forward report for the Committee on Public Property and Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. President, the Committee on Public Property and Public Works reports out three bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker, please read the report.
To the President, the members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Public Property and Public Works, to which is referred Bill Number 200188, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to acquire pre-simple title or lesser real estate interest to all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land located in the vicinity of Calhoun Road between Redline Road and Chalfont Drive, commonly known as the Liberty Bell Youth Organization Recreation Center. And Bill Number 200345, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to acquire pre-simple title or lesser interest in real estate by purchase, dedication, donation, condemnation, agree in lieu of condemnation or otherwise, in parcels of land along the Delaware River and in the bed of the former Kensington and Tacony Railroad. And Bill Number 200354, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into an amendment to a joint use agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania pursuant to which certain parcels of real estate constitute the I-95 right-of-way, located beneath the elevated highway between the Benjamin Franklin Bridge and the Walt Whitman Bridge, are leased to the City of Philadelphia by the Commonwealth, subleased by the Interstate Land Management Corporation. Respectfully reports, it is considered the same, and returns attached bills to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, the Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the first reading of this day, Bill Numbers 200188, 200345, and 200354.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and probably seconded, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 200188, 200345, 200354, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today, Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan, forward report from the Committee on License and Inspections.
Thank you, Mr. President, the Committee on Licenses and Inspections reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Licenses and Inspections, to which is referred Bill Number 200365, entitled An Ordinance Amending Chapter 9, 2500 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Fire Suppression System Workers, to provide for additional licensing requirements for fire suppression system workers. Respectfully reports, it is considered and amended the same, and returns attached bills to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the first reading of this day, Bill Number 200365.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and probably seconded, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 200365, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it.
Aye.
These will be placed on our first reading calendar today, Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Bass, forward report from the Committee on Public Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. President, the Committee on Public Health and Human Services reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Public Health and Human Services, to which is referred Bill Number 200303, entitled, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 9, 4100 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Promoting Healthy Families and Workplaces, to establish leave time for public health emergencies, modify existing provisions concerning the paid sick leave, and making technical changes. Respectfully reports, it is considered and amended the same, and returns attached bills to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 200303.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and probably seconded, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 200303, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Ayes have it, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today, Chair now recognizes Councilman Jones, forward report from the Committee on Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. President, the Committee on Public Safety reports two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman, Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Public Safety, to which is referred Bill Number 200364, entitled, An Ordinance Amending Title 17 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Contracts and Procurement, by adding a new Chapter 17, 2300, entitled Public Hearing Required Prior to Execution of a Labor Agreement with City Workers Represented by the Fraternal Order of Police with respect to the Workers' Terms and Conditions of Employment, by establishing certain definitions and requiring a public hearing within 30 days prior to the city entering into or amending a labor agreement with city workers represented by the Fraternal Order of Police. And Bill Number 200368, entitled An Ordinance Amending Title 10 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Regulation of Individual Conduct and Activity, by adding a new Chapter 10, 2500, entitled Prohibited Physical Contact by Peace Officers, to prevent unnecessary death or injury via asphyxiation by prohibiting certain physical contact by peace officers. Respectfully reports, it is considered and amended the same, and returns attached bills to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President, I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading on this day of Bills Number 200364 and 200368.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and probably seconded, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 200364 and 200368, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our introduction, concludes our reports on committee, and our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading, these bills will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker, forward motion concerning the bills on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following bills on the second reading and final passage calendars, they are numbers 200296-A, 200329-A, 200145, 200146, 200148, 200116, 200290, 200183, 200346, 200328, 200355, 200370, 200351, 200352, 200293, and 200306. Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and probably seconded, that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of consent agenda to consider the bills just read by Councilwoman Parker, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will consider the consent agenda shortly, Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker, for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on these regular, in second reading, final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President, in addition to the bills being considered on the consent agenda, the following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today, they are numbers 200261, 200262, 200379, 200383, 200384, 200385, 200331, 200080, 200216, 200377, 200147, 200285, 200286, 200287, 200288, 200291, 200292, 200347, 200076, 200208, 200363, 200367, and 200344, all other bills and resolutions are being held, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman, before considering these resolutions and bills, um... My phone? I can't, who's that? Somebody trying to get recognized? Okay. Before considering these resolutions and bills, we will consider public comment as follows. Public comment must concern matters of the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at a session of council, a speaker on any of these matters must sign up in order to testify, he must call 215-686-3406 by 5:00 PM the day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, we will take... We, when you call, we will take your name, phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support of or against the legislation and add to your list. We will telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting under ideal circumstances. Uh, today, uh, we will have two minutes to speak. However, um, this time limit may vary. In order to be fair, uh, we want to make sure that we establish a time limit and we want to make sure that individuals adhere to that time limit so we can get all of the individuals and give them an opportunity. Thirty seconds prior to your time limit of two minutes, it will be one bell ring and it will ask you to wrap up and conclude your comments, and at the end of your two minutes, uh, we will ask you to please conclude your comment. Once a lot of time has passed, um, surely thereafter you will be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. I also reserve the right to admit a number of speakers where repetitious comments are being made, uh, but today I think everyone who has signed up will be in a position to testify. Um, one last thing, I want to please be aware that the public meeting is being recorded because the meeting is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy, so by continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. Um, we're going to take a brief break to allow our tech team, um, to cue the callers up. Um, so we will be back approximately five minutes, uh, to start the process of public comment.[701.73]
Thank you. Good morning. Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the witness list. The first speaker is Marilyn Chikumba.
Good morning. Good morning. This is Mr. Chikumba speaking. How are you doing?
I'm great. Please proceed with your testimony.
Thank you. I'm here to, um, we sent letters out to all members of the city council concerning this council session this morning. I'm representing the Philadelphia RCO Coalition. We are a conscientious civic-minded group of individuals, and we are a horde of weapons that city council is using today. Now, I am trying to talk to you about the budgetary. I'll get to that in a minute. We feel that the city council is on a mission to pass as many bills as possible under the guise of COVID-19 in order to avoid public scrutiny. The current situation with COVID-19 is enabling city councils to pass legislation whose outcome may have great and lasting harm on the city of Philadelphia. We can understand the need to pass certain bills such as budgetary items, but there are too many bills on this matter that has not to do with the budget. Okay? Concerning your budgetary items, which is bill number 200285, 286, 287, and 288, yes, we understand why you have to pass them, even though you have not given us a lot of information concerning this. You know that the people don't have the opportunity to grasp these bills, and you could at least have given them enough information of who and what agencies are receiving this money, but this was not done. We are opposed to it, and we feel that, fine, pass the budgetary item because the city is in need of money, but items that's going to hurt us, as such as taxes that you're going to raise and wage tax and all that kind of stuff should not be allowed to be passed until September because this is just too much for people to grasp. Okay? And today now, you added another fifty bills. How do you say people keep up with this and knowing that you are not going to pass these bills and then we're going to be hit with bigger taxes than we had before and we have not had any time input or scrutiny on this matter? This is appalling, and I feel that you should do better than this, and I did not receive any reply to my letter that I sent to all members of the city council concerning this matter. And then you're going to have a suspended council. You're going to suspend things and ask council to suspend the rules. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for your testimony.
Yeah.
Please, please, I just want to say one more time, the first bell that you will hear will indicate that you have thirty seconds to conclude your remarks. The second bell that you will hear will mean that your two minutes are up, and we ask that you please adhere to those guidelines to conclude your remarks. Thank you. Next name, Mr. Decker.
The next speaker is Paul Prescott, speaking on Councilwoman Gims' United States Postal Service Resolution introduced today.
Thank you. Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
Good morning. Please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
My name is Paul Prescott. I'm a public school teacher and member of the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers and also a member of the Communities and Postal Workers United. I'm speaking today in solidarity with my union brothers and sisters to fight what I think is union busting that's going on. When a few years ago, the postal service jobs were being outsourced to Staples, my union participated in a boycott and teachers refused to buy their teaching supplies from here. What the Trump administration is doing now is another attempt at privatization of the postal service and attack on living wage jobs. If they were really concerned with the postal service financial situation, Congress would repeal the Postal Accountability Act of 2006, which makes the postal service pre-fund their employee pensions seventy-five years in advance, something no other public or private entity has to do. The postal service provides living wage jobs to over six hundred thousand workers. If they let the post office run out of money and if they privatize, these jobs are gone. We can't take any more low-wage jobs and we can't take any more unions being destroyed. With an average salary of over fifty thousand dollars a year, this job and these unions have been so important to helping black workers, women workers, and veteran workers advance. As more good jobs for black workers are destroyed, they are then overpoliced when they're unemployed, and we end up in the situation we are in today with rampant police violence. The other reason I'm speaking in support of this resolution is because my work as a teacher is in public service, and I believe in public services. Especially during a pandemic, we need the postal service to deliver medicines and medical supplies affordably to people across the country. We also need the postal service to ensure a fair election in the fall. We don't have many universal services in this country, services that everyone has equal access to regardless if you live in New York City or a small town of a few hundred people. We need to protect and expand this universal service, so I urge city council to vote for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
The next speaker is Monica Harmon, commenting on 200287.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Chanel Saunders. I live in Germantown section of the city of Philadelphia. I've been a Philadelphia resident all of my life, which is forty years. I'm a crossing guard of that job I've served for eight years. Today, I testify on behalf of the proposed Philadelphia Fiscal Year 2021 budget. Because as a crossing guard, it is an insult to have our funds be used as political appeals to the thousands of voices who are called to defend the police. Defunding the police doesn't just, um, it causes hardship on not just the things that are needed for beneficial purposes, but the people who utilize the funding like crossing guards and traffic directors. All of us will be impacted sincerely by not having proper funding directed towards us in the best way. I've had the bittersweet taste of being able to save a child's life because it just so happens that in the midst of one of my crossings, there was a shootout on my block. So I had to lay the child on the ground. I laid over top of her, and the bullet came back and fell past our head, but when it was over and I called for backup, hey, I'm a crossing guard. They're fighting. All right, they're crossing, they're shooting on my crossing. They told me to call back because they were in the midst of changing shifts, and then when they got there, they were like, well, what do they have on which way do they go? So we're already strained by the amount of aid that you guys are giving to us in a situation that's not safe for us in general, but then you want to remove that, which is only going to cause us to have to deal with even worse situations and taking care about them, and I don't think that's fair.
Thank you, ma'am, for your testimony and for your service. Just want to indicate that the movement will be moving the funding to a department will ultimately end up in Otis, which is our Department of Transportation and Safety, to be a part of Vision Zero. So we continue to support the crossing guards and all the great work you do. But again, thank you so much for your service, ma'am.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
The next speaker is Melissa Bova, commenting on 200344. Melissa Bova, star six to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Just state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony, please.
Good morning. My name is Melissa Bova. I'm the vice president of Government Affairs for the Pennsylvania Restaurant and Lodging Association. PRLA is proud to represent the restaurant and hospitality industry in Philadelphia. As you all know, the past few months have been an extraordinary struggle for our restaurants in the city of Philadelphia. Some of them, we are hearing, will never open their doors again, which is why I'm here to thank all of you for, hopefully, passing legislation today that will provide relief and flexibility to businesses in the city. First, thank you to Councilwoman Sherrell Parker for sponsoring bill number 200344. This bill recognizes the long-term operational changes that are occurring for restaurants in our industry. Even as we slowly begin the process of reopening, the culture has changed, and takeout and delivery are going to be a larger portion of our industry's survival than ever before. Bill number 200344 takes much-needed steps to ensure that third-party delivery companies comply with common-sense transparency initiatives in addition to capping fees at fifteen percent for the duration of the crisis. Many of those companies are doing the right thing, and we thank them for that, but for those that are not, this holds them accountable during a time that charging high rates only hurts businesses that are already suffering, and I ask you to support this bill today. Second, a thank you to Councilwomen Dom and Heenan for sponsoring bills number 200351 and 200352. These pieces of legislation, similar to other cities around the country and even cities in Pennsylvania, authorizes the streets department to be creative in terms of allowing outdoor seating, either via an expansion of sidewalks, creating streeterys, shutting down streets, or allowing expansion generally. We will not return to normal dining anytime soon, and this is a great way of letting the people of Philadelphia get out and dine safely while ensuring social distancing for the safety of our employees and guests. I ask you to support these bills as well. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
The next speaker is Judy Mead, commenting on 200344.
Commenting on 200344, Judy Mead.
The next speaker is Michael Schulson.
Yeah, how you doing? This is Michael Schulson from Schulson Collective, and I'll be commenting on the same two bills. Thank you for Councilwoman Sherrell Parker and for Councilman Heenan and Dom. I think right now, the important thing to realize in the hospitality industry, which makes up such an important part of tourism convention and all of Philadelphia, is that right now, it's about survival. It's not about thriving. And unfortunately, in a situation like this, a lot of companies are trying to thrive when restaurants are just trying to survive. And right now, we're not making money. We're not looking to get rich. We're looking to bring employees of Philadelphia back to work. We're looking to get wood off the wood.
To fight what I think is union busting that's going on. When a few years ago, the postal service jobs were being outsourced to Staples. My union participated in a boycott and teachers refused to buy their teaching supplies from here. What the Trump administration is doing now is another attempt at privatization of the postal service and attack on living wage jobs. If they were really concerned with the postal service financial situation, Congress would repeal the Postal Accountability Act of two thousand and six, which makes the postal service pre-fund their employee pensions seventy-five years in advance, something no other public or private entity has to do. The postal service provides living wage jobs to over six hundred thousand workers. If they let the post office run out of money and if they privatize, these jobs are gone. We can't take any more low-wage jobs and we can't take any more unions being destroyed. With an average salary of over fifty thousand dollars a year, this job and these unions have been so important to helping black workers, women workers, and veteran workers advance. As more good jobs for black workers are destroyed, they are then overpoliced when they're unemployed and we end up in the situation we are in today with rampant police violence. The other reason I'm speaking in support of this resolution is because my work as a teacher was in public service and I believe in public services. Especially during a pandemic, we need the postal service to deliver medicines and medical supplies affordably to people across the country. We also need the postal service to ensure a fair election in the fall. We don't have many universal services in this country, services that everyone has equal access to regardless if you live in New York City or a small town of a few hundred people. We need to protect and expand this universal service, so I urge city council to vote for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
The next speaker is Monica Harmon, commenting on two zero zero three zero six.
Hello, um, thank you, uh, Council President Clark and esteemed city council members for the opportunity to speak on behalf of nurses and other healthcare workers in support of bill number two zero zero three zero six. My name is Monica Harmon. I've been a proud professional nurse for two decades. My specialties are public health and nursing education. I am the current chapter president of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Area Black Nurses Association and am the co-chair of the Pennsylvania Action Coalition Nurse Diversity Council. The year twenty twenty was deemed the year of the nurse and midwife by the World Health Organization in January of twenty nineteen. This designation was aimed at highlighting the work of the twenty point seven million nurses globally from the bedside to the boardroom and everywhere in between and beyond. Nurses courageously care for the welfare of their patients and often do so with flexibility and grace. However, there is a systemic flaw that hinders the care of nurses and that is lack of benefits to protect healthcare workers when we ourselves get sick through occupational exposure to pathogens such as coronavirus. Nurses practice in a variety of ca- capacities utilizing their knowledge and skills in different spaces while making a difference in the lives of individuals, families, populations, and communities. In fact, the recent coronavirus pandemic and the enduring epidemic of racism showcases the great sacrifices healthcare workers make while tirelessly prioritizing the care of patients and their loved ones while putting their own health and well-being at risk by enduring the reuse of personal protective equipment and other practices against our training, but necessary to provide care. I implore you, the members of Philadelphia City Council, to make a difference in the lives of nurses and other healthcare workers by supporting bill number two zero zero three zero six today. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
The next speaker is Chanel Saunders, commenting on two zero zero two eight seven.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Chanel Saunders. I live in Germantown section of the city of Philadelphia. I've been a Philadelphia resident all of my life, which is forty years. Um, I'm a crossing guard of that job I've served for eight years. Um, today I testify on behalf of the proposed Philadelphia Fiscal Year twenty twenty-one budget. Because of, because as a crossing guard, it is an insult to have our funds be used as political appeals to the thousands of voices who are called to defend the police. Defunding the police doesn't just, um, it, it causes hardship on not just the things that are needed for beneficial, uh, purposes, but the people who utilize the funding like crossing guards and, um, traffic directors. All of us will be impacted sincerely by, um, not having proper funding directed towards us in the best way. Um, I've had the bittersweet taste of being able to save a child's life because it just so happens that in the midst of, uh, one of my crossings, there was a shootout on my block, so I had to lay the child on the ground. I laid over top of her and the bullet came back and fell past our head, but when it was over and I called for backup, hey, I'm a crossing guard. They're fighting. Alright, they're crossing, they're, they're shooting on my crossing. They told me to call back because they were in the midst of changing shifts. And then when they got there, they're like, well, what did they have on which way did they go? So we're already strained by the amount of aid that you guys are giving to us in a situation that's not safe for us in general, but then you want to remove that, which is only going to cause us to have to deal with even worse situations and taking care about them, and I don't think that's fair.
Thank, thank you, ma'am, uh, for your testimony and for your service. Uh, just want to indicate that the, uh, movement will be moving the funding to a department will ultimately end up in Otis, which is our Department of Transportation and Safety, uh, to be a part of Vision Zero. So we continue to support, um, the crossing guards and all the great work you do. So, but again, thank you so much for your service, ma'am.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
The next speaker is Melissa Bova, commenting on two zero zero three four four. Melissa Bova, star six to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Um, just state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony, please.
Good morning. My name is Melissa Bova. I'm the vice president of Government Affairs for the Pennsylvania Restaurant and Lodging Association. PRLA is proud to represent the restaurant and hospitality industry in Philadelphia. As you all know, the past few months have been an extraordinary struggle for our restaurants in the city of Philadelphia. Some of them we are hearing will never open their doors again, which is why I'm here to thank all of you for hopefully passing legislation today that will provide relief and flexibility to businesses in the city. First, thank you to Councilwoman Sherrell Parker for sponsoring bill number two zero zero three four four. This bill recognizes the long-term operational changes that are occurring for restaurants in our industry. Even as we slowly begin the process of reopening, the culture has changed and takeout and delivery are going to be a larger portion of our industry's survival than ever before. Bill number two zero zero three four four takes much-needed steps to ensure that third-party delivery companies comply with common sense transparency initiatives in addition to capping fees at fifteen percent for the duration of the crisis. Many of those companies are doing the right thing and we thank them for that, but for those that are not, this holds them accountable during a time that charging high rates only hurts businesses that are already suffering, and I ask you to support this bill today. Second, a thank you to Councilman Dom and Heenan for sponsoring bills number two zero zero three five one and two zero zero three five two. These pieces of legislation, similar to other cities around the country and even cities in Pennsylvania, authorizes the Streets Department to be creative in terms of allowing outdoor seating, either via an expansion of sidewalks, creating streeteries, shutting down streets, or allowing expansion generally. We will not return to normal dining anytime soon, and this is a great way of letting the people of Philadelphia get out and dine safely while ensuring social distancing for the safety of our employees and guests. I ask you to support these bills as well. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
The next speaker is Judy Me. Commenting on two zero zero three four four, Judy Me. The next speaker is Michael Schulson.
Yeah, how you doing? This is Michael Schulson from Schulson Collective, and I'll be commenting on the same two bills. Thank you for Councilwoman, uh, Sherrell Parker and for Councilman, uh, Heenan and Dom. Um, I think right now the important thing to realize in the hospitality industry, which makes up such an important part of tourism convention and, and all of Philadelphia, is that right now it's about survival. It's not about thriving. And unfortunately, in a situation like this, a lot of companies are trying to thrive when restaurants are just trying to survive. And right now, we're not making money. We're not looking to, to, to get rich. We're looking to bring employees of Philadelphia back to work. We're looking to get, uh, wood off the windows of restaurants and all that stuff. And the only way to do that is to survive, and these two bills, uh, help us survive long-term. The one we're limiting the fees, here's companies such as Grubhub and DoorDash and all these other companies that are thriving during a time when there's a pandemic, when people just need to eat. The cost of food has gone through the roofs and ultimately the people who are going to suffer is everybody at home. So we, we encourage you to support that one bill. The other piece with outdoor seating, right now, soon we're going to go to fifty percent capacity inside. Unfortunately, that's not enough to cover our numbers of, of costs. We went from fifteen hundred employees as a company. Right now, we're down to about a hundred. And the goal is to bring as many of those people back and with outdoor seating extended and allowing it and reducing this bill with takeout, that allows us to survive. We will not be thriving.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony.
The next speaker is Jeff Benjamin.
It's Jeff Benjamin, Vetri Restaurant Corp. Uh, we've been doing business here in the city of Philadelphia for over twenty years. Echoing what both Michael Schulson and, uh, uh, Melissa Bova said and some other colleagues that will get on later, so not to, not at the risk of piling on, I'd like to thank you all for all you are doing so far and just reiterate, uh, what Michael said. The, uh, no one's going to deny the fact that some of our delivery services have the right to make some money, but at this point it's become opportunistic in the face of the pandemic. Uh, we decimated our workforce like many of our colleagues. Uh, we're fortunate in that we will likely reopen, but as Michael said and Melissa echoed, uh, we will reopen just to, just to be able to survive, not to thrive. Uh, we would like for us to be able to give back all of our employees their jobs, which we intend to do in the next several days. But that's predicated on being able to have the outdoor dining bill, uh, continued through the end of this pandemic until we normalize business. It's predicated on us, uh, being able to make money on food delivery, not just be able to, um, sustain it. Uh, so I request humbly that you all continue to support these bills and other initiatives that may come before you that allow the hospitality industry in Philadelphia to thrive. Um, we have, uh, quite an impact, uh, industry-wide on this city and tourism is not going to come back anytime soon, but the people in Philadelphia are eager to come back out and eat. Uh, the vast majority of them have said that they will come back out to eat if they're allowed to eat outside. Uh, so passing that emergency bill, uh, several weeks ago certainly helps, but extending that will ensure the future of the restaurant business in Philadelphia. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
The next speaker is Tootsie Levine, commenting on two zero zero three four four.
Hi, this is Tootsie.
Good morning. Um, state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony, please.
Thank you. Good morning, Council President Clark and members of city council. My name is Marion Ivy, a lifelong Philadelphian. Most people know me as Tootsie. I have owned and run Tootsie's Buffet at the Reading Terminal Market for fifteen years. I also had a successful catering business from the store at the terminal. There are no words to describe the devastation caused by COVID nineteen. Things changed for us, the Reading Terminal Market, and the world. Not wanting to reduce staff, we started offering meals to go and we delivered them to my neighbors in my apartment building. And many of the seniors were afraid to go out and it was a helpful service for them and I thought it would help us. During the early days of the COVID shutdown, we were limping along like everybody else. Then on April seventh, I was diagnosed with COVID nineteen. And one week later, so was my husband, and his case was much more severe than mine. Needless to say, that crippled my ability to conduct business and I had to shut down for three weeks. When we were cleared to go back, it was a much different, smaller business as the city was taking the home quarantine very seriously. There were hardly any customers in the terminal. And in an attempt to survive, I subscribed to Grubhub for home delivery. I was not familiar with how they really operated, the costs or the differences between the delivery services. In concept, they seemed innovative and handy, but the sticker shock was eye-opening and not financially viable. How grateful I am to Councilwoman Parker for her thoughtful bill that will help longtime food establishments, establishments like mine trying to stay alive during the remainder of this pandemic. Teaming them up with food delivery services willing to reduce their prices is a win-win. The more demand for their services, the, the more employees they can keep or hire as we increase the number of our transactions. We still have a long way to go to learn about implementing the constantly changing safety measures, restrictions and openings yet to come during the next stages of COVID and need to realize that if science is right, we may have to step back again. I strongly encourage you to vote for this bill today. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Stay strong. Um, thanks for your commitment.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tiffany Green, commenting on two zero zero three seven zero, two zero zero three five two, and two zero zero three five one.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Um, just state your.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm gonna make it, I want to speak quickly. Um, I want to speak on bill two hundred three five one. Um, we say that black lives matter, while black opinion should matter too. And at this particular point, and this particular bill should be limited to center city and not in residential areas where people are still surviving and trying to, um, you know, live a, a everyday life and to have people opening up outdoor eateries on the corner of their block, drinking and, and eating without masks is, uh, can lead to more, uh, cases of COVID in the black, in the black and poor communities. Um, there was a Dr. Shap on CNN this morning who stated infection disease, said that we should be promoting, uh, masks, wearing masks. It should be the social norm. Uh, we need a, a constant message between political and business and church leaders, uh, to have, um, a mandate for masks and that we do not think that outdoor eateries and cafes should be down in residential areas. Maybe good for center city. My next bill, two bills I want to speak on real quick is two hundred three seventy with the bicycle and street closures. We think that RCOs and organizations get advanced notice of any street closures. Uh, many times the sector will move a bus over three, four blocks, which is really, uh, da- uh, uh, hurtful. We've had, we've heard back from many of our seniors, people with wheelchairs, uh, people with disabled, with kids have to walk four or five blocks to go catch a bus. There is no advanced notification of, of, of street closures or, or sector reruns and everything like that. We think for the bicycle bill, that we need to have, uh, a notification. They came and split, uh, one of our major streets, Point Breeze down the middle, to put a bicycle route that was not fair to our community. Whereas in affluent neighborhoods, you, um, between Southwood Market Street, you had a community meeting and a community vote. So that was unfair treatment of the black community. And finally, I want to make address that this zoning, uh, meetings regarding Zoom is unfair. Uh, we talked to some of our residents. They don't feel the need to do Zoom, Zoom at this point. A lot of them feel that they're just frustrated with the whole COVID and to have, and it's unable, and, and secondly, it's unable to take a community vote. How do you want to take a community vote with Zoom? And the community residents, seniors, and everybody who don't even really know how to do this. And so we think it should be a town hall meeting regarding the zoning process and the ZBA process. You're asking people to do a lot during this COVID time who are trying to just live a regular life and who is, and some family members are suffering with COVID nineteen. And to ask us to do all this, uh, virtually and, and internet-wise is not being considerate. And I'm sure, and I'm, and I'm not trying to throw shade, but I don't think Mr. Adam Dom has spoken to me asking like in groups about this outdoor eating cafe, because in the end, businesses are not going to play pay healthcare bills at the hospital. Okay, we're not saying that they're not entitled, but all of us are dealing in sacrificing and some of us have to sacrifice, we all are sacrificing and trying to stay alive. And if we operate at fifty percent, then we operate at fifty percent and it's up to city council simply to try to find additional financial help for those businesses. But you can't be having people coming from outside town, outside areas into black areas who might be COVID nineteen and bringing, spreading the disease. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
The next speaker is Chelsea DeFoe, commenting on two zero zero three two eight. Chelsea DeFoe, star six to unmute.
Hello.
Hi, good morning. Uh, please state your name for your record and proceed with your testimony.
Good morning, members of city council. My name is Chelsea DeFoe and I have a master's in public health with a concentration in occupational and environmental health from Jekyll University's Doran's School of Public Health. I'm testifying in support of bill number two zero zero three two eight, amending the Philadelphia Code to provide employees protections during the COVID nineteen pandemic. I believe this bill will protect workers, their families, and the overall public health. The bill will empower workers to speak against workplace violations and thus minimize their risk of exposure to COVID nineteen. Fair can cause workers to shy away from reporting and can lead to an increase of cases due to unsafe practices. A bill to support workers during COVID, COVID nineteen epidemic will reassure the health and safety of their families and the public. It is estimated that a person infected with the coronavirus will infect on average two or more people. Without the proper workplace precautions, such as the provision of masks and the cleaning of high-touch spaces, the virus can easily spread in the workplace and then the community. This bill opens the door to allow employers to be held accountable for their actions. Workers are crucial to getting our city back on its feet. It's our job to provide them with the security and resources they need to stay healthy and feel confident enough to do their jobs effectively. That is why I'm in support of bill number two zero zero three two eight. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Kaylee McGuffin, commenting on two zero zero three two eight.
Hello, can you hear me?
Good morning. Please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Hi, my name is Kaylee McGuffin. Um, I am a one P A member and I'm calling in favor of the anti-retaliation bill. Um, I worked at, uh, for the company Moms Organic Market. There's a location in Center City for six years. Um, when COVID nineteen pandemic hit, uh, myself and other brokers and, um, customers started to realize that the company was not taking proper precautions, um, to minimize the risk of contracting the virus, uh, for employees and customers. Um, I brought up these concerns and solutions with the Center City Stores Management, the company's H R department, and directly to the C E O. Um, and I was met with disregard and minimizing of my concerns. Um, I scheduled a call with the H R department on, um, much reason to talk about my concerns and more depth. Um, and what I saw was as an irresponsible disregard from employee health by the C E O. Um, and the H R representative subsequently fired me for being, and I quote, "too negative" and appearing, quote, "appearing unwilling to want to join." Um, and I was, the, uh, H R representative also banned me from all nineteen store locations. Uh, following the call, I requested a formal letter for termination, um, in a week apart, uh, and I was never given a response, um, or any acknowledgement of my email. Um, no workers in the city should, uh, be in fear of losing their job for expressing safety commissions, commissions ever, but especially not during a global pandemic. Um, and so I just wanted to call to urge you all to vote in favor of this bill. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony.
There are no other, no other speakers in the public comment, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. That concludes our public comment for today. And we will now consider today's bill consent agenda. Um, I would ask the clerk to read the titles of all the bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection, and without the date, the bill will be immediately removed from the consent agenda and placed on our regular final passes calendar. Mr. Decker will now read the titles of the bills on the consent agenda.
Bill number two zero zero two nine six A entitled an ordinance constituting the fifteen supplemental ordinance to the General Gas Works Revenue Bound Ordinance of nineteen ninety-eight, authorized in the city of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Decide either public or private sale, one or more series of gas works revenue bonds and gas works revenue bonds to refund such bonds. And bill number two zero zero three two nine A entitled an ordinance approving a substantial amendment to the annual action plan two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty to add forty million, four hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars in federal coronavirus aid relief and economic security act funding. And bill number two zero zero one four five entitled an ordinance authorizing the vacating of Charles Street, also known as Marple Street, between Maniant Avenue and Dexter Street. And bill number two zero zero one four six entitled an ordinance amending section two of an ordinance, bill number one nine zero four five zero, approved July seventeen, two thousand and nineteen, entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lands of grades in a portion of city plan number fifteen S by placing on the city plan outer street from Seventeenth Street to Eighteenth Street in order to conform more closely with existing conditions by revising the terms and conditions stated therein and making certain technical changes. And bill number two zero zero one four eight entitled an ordinance authorizing a revision of lands of grades in a portion of city plan number three fifty-nine by relocating the southwesterly house line of Byberry Road approximately two feet southwestwardly between a point approximately four hundred and one feet northwest of the Roosevelt Boulevard to a point approximately five hundred and fifty feet further northwestwardly therefrom, thereby widening said Byberry Road between such points. And bill number two zero zero one one six entitled an ordinance amending chapter nine of Subcode P M, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, entitled four of the Philadelphia Code, entitled additional special requirements to establish requirements for managers of certain buildings pertaining to identification of occupants to better assist responders during emergency situations. And bill number two zero zero two nine zero entitled an ordinance amending chapter nineteen, twenty-six hundred of the Philadelphia Code, entitled business income, income and receives taxes by revising certain tax rates. And bill number two zero zero one eight three entitled an ordinance approving the ninth amendment of the redevelopment proposal for the Point Breeze area, being the area generally bounded by Washington Avenue, South Twenty-Fifth Street, Reed Street, the rear property lines of the fourteen hundred and fifteen hundred blocks of South Thelmer Street, Plasker Street, South Twenty-Fifth Street, Moore Street, and South Bald Street. And bill number two zero zero three four six entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Fifty-Sixth Street, Arch Street, Kindersberg Street, and Martin Street. And bill number two zero zero three two eight entitled an ordinance amending the Philadelphia Code to add a new chapter entitled employee protections in connection with COVID nineteen emergency health orders to provide workplace protections and emergency health orders and regulations, provide protections for employees against retaliatory action, both for the disclosure of information related to employer noncompliance with such orders and for refusal to work under unsafe conditions caused by noncompliance with such orders. And bill number two zero zero three five five entitled an ordinance amending an ordinance, bill number one eight zero two nine three, entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lands of grades in a portion of city plan number thirty-four S and forty-one S by striking from the city plan and vacating the legally open portions of Paco Avenue from Christopher Columbus Boulevard to the pierhead line of the Delaware River and reserving a place in the city plan right of way for sewer drainage purposes. And bill number two zero zero three seven zero entitled an ordinance authorizing the procurement commission on behalf of the city to enter into a concession agreement with Bicycle Transit Systems Incorporated for the operation, maintenance, and expansion of a bicycle sharing system, an essential cope, an essential service during the COVID nineteen period. And bill number two zero zero three five one entitled an ordinance authorizing the operation of sidewalk cafes during the COVID nineteen emergency until December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty in areas of the city where such activity currently must be otherwise authorized by special ordinance and allowing expanded activity by currently licensed sidewalk cafe operations. And bill number two zero zero three five two entitled an ordinance amending chapter eleven, one hundred of the Philadelphia Code and title general provisions to authorize the Streets Department to permit closure of the public right of way, including on-street parking spaces for public health, welfare, and safety purposes during the COVID nineteen public health emergency on December, until December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty, including expansion of business uses that cannot operate in indoor environment or have limited indoor capacity and/or service due to the COVID nineteen emergency. And bill number two zero zero two nine three entitled an ordinance amending chapter seventeen, fourteen hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled non-competeively bid contracts, financial assistance, by making revisions, including but not limited to the exception for emergency contracting. And bill number two zero zero three zero six entitled an ordinance amending chapter nine, forty-one hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled promoting healthy families and workplaces by adding new definitions and requirements to ensure that certain healthcare employees are compensated for lost wages and medical expenses in the event they contract a communicable disease at work during a pandemic or epidemic event, all under certain terms and conditions.
Hey, Mr. Decker, chair recognizes. Councilwoman Brooks, did you want to be recognized?
I can hear you.
Okay.
My apologies. Af- after we go through this vote.
Oh, after the vote. Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Decker. All right, going to the consent agenda. These bills have been read on two different days. Uh, the question for each bill now is shall the bill pass finally? Uh, clerks shall call the roll and upon being called, each council member shall vote aye or hee. on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye, and those bills for which the member is voting nay. Mr. Decker, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Don?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Green?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Ginn?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Heenan?
Council President, I vote aye on all bills.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Jones?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman O?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman O'Neal?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Scola?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye on all bills.
Council President Clark?
Aye on all bills. Majority of all members having voted in affirmative for each of the bills, the bills on the consent agenda are passed. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, can you please read the title of resolutions number 200261?
A resolution encouraging the National Committee, Committee of the Young Democrats of America to hold their 2021 biennial convention in the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
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 As opposed, eyes have it, resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolutions number 200262.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1421 Letterlay Street located in the 5th Councilmanic District.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second. It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As opposed, eyes have it, resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 200379?
A resolution calling upon the city of Philadelphia to invest in a black stimulus package for our neighborhoods to include $500 million in capital investments for affordable housing and commercial corridors, in addition to operating investments in a poverty action fund for rent subsidy, basic income, benefits access, and job training stipends, and further authorizing the Committee on Appropriations and the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings to consider the city's black stimulus.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you to all my colleagues. I look forward to a long conversation as we move this forward. I move for the adoption.
Second. It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, resolution number 200283?
A resolution ratifying the mayor's declaration of emergency related to the COVID-19 health emergency.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment on the, on your behalf to resolution number 200383. A copy of this amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for its adoption.
Thank you. It's been moved in probably second. That amendment to resolution number 200383 be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution has been amended. Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones for motion on the amendment resolution.
Thank you again, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution as amended.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Councilwoman Brooks? Councilwoman Brooks? Yeah, I think it's for make sure. Now, you, you wanted to be recognized.
I, I think, I just want to put my votes on the record before we go through the individual bills. That's what I was trying to get, but.
Sure, I don't, still getting used to some of this stuff. All right. Thank you. Mr. Decker, can you please read the title of resolution number 200384?
A resi, uh, resolution calling upon the Congress to allocate fair and direct federal support to all of America's communities regardless of population size.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Green for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution, and I want to thank my colleagues for their support, continues the work that we've been doing at a national level with National League of Cities to make sure we have fair funding for all cities in this nation as we continue to deal with the COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolutions.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in probably second. If the resolution be adopted, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 200385?
A resolution calling upon the Congress to enact and fund a national sustainable water affordability plan similar to the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, lighting.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. This is a similar resolution which was brought to me by the President of Democratic Minnesota official Scott Benson, a council member in Detroit. We're all familiar with the major issues of water in Michigan, and this supports this type of legislation throughout our nation so we don't have the same problem that we had in Flint, Michigan, or other cities around the country. Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 200331?
A resolution approving the Director of Finance's Budget Stabilization Reserve Fund with broad certification for purposes of allowing utilization of $34,276,000 in reserve funds for general fund purposes in connection with the FY 2020 operating budget.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second. It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, resolution number 200080?
A resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter, calling on the police department to eliminate the practice of unconstitutional stop and frisk and providing for the submission of the proposed amendment to the electors of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second. It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Um, let's just say that this requires a suit, uh, a resolution to Home Rule Charter, so it requires two-thirds vote. Therefore, the question is, shall this resolution be adopted? Chief Clerk will call the roll. I think we just heard the roll. Uh, it sounded like it was unanimous, so that clearly is two-thirds. Thank you. All right, let's call the roll, Mr. Decker. I'm sorry, I'm having a little challenge here. I got all kinds of stuff going on. Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Don?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ginn?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
All right, eyes are 16, nays are zero. Two-thirds of all members of the council voting in affirmative, resolution number 20080 has been adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number 200216.
A resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter, providing for the creation of the Office of the Victim Advocate.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, colleagues. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll be real good. Sorry. Uh, this also is an amendment to the Home Rule Charter. I better read my script. It requires two-thirds vote. Therefore, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? And Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Don?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ginn?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. Mr. Decker, is Councilman O back? You report?
He is, Mr. President.
But, okay, thank you. Eyes are 17, nays are zero. Two-thirds of all members of the council having voted in affirmative, resolution number 200216 has been adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number 200377.
A resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to provide for the creation of a citizens' police oversight commission and to authorize city council by ordinance to determine the composition, powers, and duties of the commission, and providing for the submission of the amendment to the electors of Philadelphia.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Because moving the second resolution be adopted because resolution number 200377 is an amendment to the Home Rule Charter, it requires two-thirds vote, therefore the question is, shall this resolution be adopted? Chief Clerk will call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass? Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Don?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ginn?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal? Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. Two-thirds of all members of the council having voted in affirmative, resolution number 200377 has been adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number 200147.
An ordinance amending Subcode F of Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code and Title, the Philadelphia Fire Code, to establish limitations on the use of hydrogen fluoride and hydrofluoric acid.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question is now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Don?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ginn?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
All right, eyes are 17, and nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 200285?
An ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years 2021 through 2026 inclusive.
I believe, Councilman Don, would you speak prior to this bill?
Yes, thank you, Council President.
Councilman Don?
Thank you. Our budget work with Councilman Parker, Scola, Kinnon Sanchez, we pulled your hard work and putting this budget together.
Councilman Don, I'm really having a really difficult time hearing you.
Can you be better?
Still not getting you.
I'll call back. I'll call back.
Uh, you gonna call back right now? Mr. Decker, we're gonna, uh, come back when Councilman Don gets connected. Not sure when he'll be ready. So we're, we're gonna move on since we did not initiate the vote. Um, Mr. Decker, just read the title of, um, 200286.
An ordinance to adopt a fiscal 2021 capital budget.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now, is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Don?
Councilwoman Gaultier? Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ginn?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas? Aye. Council President Clark?
Aye. Eyes are 16, and nays are zero. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 200287.
An ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2021.
I believe Councilwoman Brooks, I've, I've had indicated that you want to speak.
Yes, yes, I do. Thank you, Council President. Um, so I just, I would be voting to no today on two bills. I would vote no on bill number 200347 to grant the former PES refinery site renewed status as a Keystone Opportunity Zone, and bill 200287 to approve the FY 21 operating budget as amended at last week's 11:00 PM committee meeting. I want to briefly explain my reasoning. First, regarding the Keystone Opportunity Zone, I have concerns about providing a corporation I have concerns about providing a corporation like Hillco with major tax breaks. I want to recognize the work of my colleague, Councilmember Johnson, to work through these concerns, and he has made great progress on maximizing the benefits to the community. But I worry that there is insufficient legal accountability to ensure that the K O C site upholds their commitments to the community. Furthermore, the city's own analysis of K O C sites concluded that opportunity zones are suboptimal policies. The thirteen hundred acres of land on a refinery site have been used to pollute, endanger, and extract wealth from black communities for far too long, and our residents, um, deserve better, so I'll be voting no. Second, the operating budget, bill two eight seven, eliminates only nineteen million increase proposed from the F Y twenty-one Philadelphia Police Department budget, a decision that was made by the mayor, um, Kenny and his administration. It moves crossing guards and safety officers out of the police budget. It therefore includes no real cuts to the police budget for F Y twenty-one, and I believe that that is a mistake. Uh, my council colleagues and their staff members have worked incredibly hard over the past few weeks analyzing and amending the F Y twenty-one budget. And the operating budget bill includes a number of improvements, restoring funding to Philadelphia, I'm sorry, Pennsylvania immigrant and family unity project, um, the Housing Trust Act, adult education programs, anti-poverty programs, and the African-American museums. Um, all changes that will have tangible impact on the lives of our constituents, especially those most vulnerable to the impacts of COVID nineteen. And I want to commend my colleagues for fighting for affordable housing, immigrant communities, and poor working-class families when they need it the most. The Philadelphia that our community members deserve and the Philadelphia that we are fighting for in the streets can only be realized through bold changes. Restoring funding to critical programs that were cut is not enough.
I'll just vote no.
Keeping the P P D budget at F twenty is not enough. I cannot accept a budget that allows the Philadelphia Police Department to make up fifteen percent of the total operation budget when they have failed to historically make our communities safer. The P P D budget has been increased at a rate that far surpasses any other department, despite the fact that the violence in our city remains rampant and the clearance rates of homicide has been stagnant. Displays of excessive force against protesters, hostility towards journalists, and rallying behind violent vigilante groups has further called into question whether the P P D's budget is justified. If the police department is where our schools, we would have long ago threatened with closure. We cannot continue to pour our trust and our resources into institutions that has continued to exhibit racism and perpetuate violence against the most vulnerable communities. It is a false promise that increasing the police budget, the police presence, makes communities safer. Poor, working-class communities of color are suffering from high rates of COVID nineteen, gun violence, lack of affordable housing and healthcare, unemployment, and underfunded toxic schools. Policing is not the remedy to this. What our neighborhoods need is investments, resources, and opportunities. A fair budget is not just an adjustment to the status quo. A fair budget would confront structural, structural problems with structural changes. We must develop lasting strategies to cut the root causes of homelessness, gun violence, chemical dependency, environmental racism, and poverty. Because policing and imprisonment are not solutions, they simply exacerbate existing social problems. This is what our constituents have been saying for, for months, cut police funding, invest in communities. And I'm here because the movement that elected me into office, and it's important for me to advocate on the behalf of people who do not have a voice. For decades, poor and working-class black and brown communities have been left out of this political process. And if we are serious about addressing systematic systemic racism, the ongoing pandemic, economic uncertainty, and severe inequality, we must need, we need to start by giving these community members a voice and decisions directly impacting their lives. So, the people want to be heard, and to pass a budget with no meaningful cuts to police department at this time, when thousands of Philadelphians are flooding the streets, occupying city, city buildings, calling, emailing, organizing, and rising up in grief and rage, is clearly saying defund the police would be a mistake. I cannot in good faith vote on a budget that shows disregard for the voices of our constituents. And when we fail to listen to the people that we serve, we fail to represent them. That's why I'll be voting no, and thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council Lady. Um, let me go ahead. Mr. Decker, read the title one more time on, uh, two eighty-seven.
Uh, Mr. President, I'm, I'm reminded that the council needs to pass the capital program before it passes the, uh, operating budget.
Oh, so we'll go back, we'll go back to, uh, two eighty-five.
Is Councilman Don back?
Yes, I'm back, I'm back.
Uh, bill number two zero zero, two eight five, entitled an ordinance to adopt the capital program for the six fiscal years two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-six inclusive.
Thank you. This bill, uh, Councilman Don, did you, do you want to be recognized?
Yes, please, Council President.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we have you now. Thank you.
Today, I'm voting in favor of the fiscal twenty-one budget to ensure that vital services for our residents and businesses are delivered. I want to thank you, Council President Clark, and our budget work group, council members Parker, Squilla, Camila Sanchez, and Green, for all of your hard work in putting this budget together. And I'd also like to thank Councilmember Curtis Jones for his participation in our final budget meeting, where the goal was for all of us to reach a final consensus. We all made compromises in order to reach the goal of approving a budget we felt best served the residents and businesses of Philadelphia, and each of us brought a perspective to the table to help craft the budget we're putting forward today. While I'm in favor and voting for this budget, it's not without great concern with the process and the outcome. My office put in over thirty requests for information to the administration so we could help find additional savings, avoid tax increases, and restore funding for essential programs and services. Nearly all of our requests went unanswered, including the cost of a cadet class for prisons, overtime policies, expenses, and major contract costs. Philadelphians deserve better. They deserve to hear alternatives, and not just broad-based alternatives, but calculated, well-thought-out alternatives based on facts. Facts and details that make the transparency expectations of our public and certainly our city council. One thing's certain, this administration has been on a nine-hundred-million-dollar spending spree for the last four years, and in doing so, jeopardized funding for affordable housing, health services, arts and culture, workforce development, parks and rec. And this occurred at a time when it was needed most. This is a wake-up call for the city. The last few months have proven that even when we, when Philadelphia experiences a few years of economic growth and increased revenues, there has to be corresponding impact for our people and for our city. Impact that's transparent to everyone, because everyone has the right to know what's working and what's not. We need a city government that's relentlessly mindful of its spending and extremely focused on results for our people and businesses. We're off track right now, heading in the wrong direction after investing nine-hundred million. The question is, what has been the measurable impact to poverty, crime, opioids, jobs, affordable housing, education, or healthcare? We have to make tough decisions to get us through this pandemic, and today, we're doing exactly that with this budget. But today also marks the moment my colleagues and I agree that the administration must justify its ongoing spending and assure the city council that our approved budget is being put to good use. We're putting the administration on notice that we'll be holding quarterly meetings through the Committee on Fiscal Stability to address and better account for their spending, efficiency efforts, management practices, and strategic investments, as well as setting aspirational goals that we expect them to work towards for our short-term health and our long-term well-being. It's also clear that we're a city in need of a plan for its economic future. Today, I'm calling on all my colleagues to support the creation of a special committee on the future economy of Philadelphia. And with the support of you, Council President, I ask all of you to work with us and other stakeholders to develop policies and promote economic competitiveness, quality, and expansion for our city and all its people. It's a time, it's time now we get serious about our jobs crisis and intentionally build a shared economy for all Philadelphians. I look forward to joining my colleagues in designing ambitious and comprehensive reforms that create a stronger roadmap for our city's future economy. It's time for big change in the city, and these two efforts are just the start of what's to come. We must become the city everyone expects us to be, one that's equitable, inventive, and resilient. And I want to thank all my colleagues and you, Council President, for your willingness to do this with me. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, real quick, just want to remind everyone that, uh, as a part of the budget process, we do have a one-billion-dollar standby appropriations that will give us an opportunity, um, during the course of the next several months, um, to not only receive federal and state dollars as it relates to cares, but also gives us an opportunity, uh, to adjust, um, and look at, uh, possible realignments of budgets, uh, as we move, move ahead. So it was important for us to move from the eight-hundred million initially to one billion, uh, in anticipation of the possibility of some changes, because as we said earlier, uh, this is, um, unlike any budget process that I've ever been in, and I'm assuming everybody here understanding the shortness and all of the challenges, but, um, it's unlikely that we will not be back at some point, uh, during the next couple of months to address, uh, this budget again. Uh, but right now, uh, we must move forward and, um, adhere to the, uh, charter-mandated balanced budget, but, um, and I don't want to be corny and say, uh, as the guy in the, the suit, uh, whatever his name, Ronald Schwarzenegger said, I'll be back, but we will be back. I mean, this is a simple reality based on what we have to do. So with that, um, Mr. Decker, you read the title, um, this bill having been read on two different days, the question is now, shall the bill pass finally? Um, Chief Clerk, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Don.
Councilman Don.
Councilwoman Gattier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ginn.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Camila Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Scola.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye.
Council President Clark, it's Alan Don. I'd like to vote aye.
All right, because you know we were getting ready to talk about you real bad if you didn't come back on that line, so. All right, the ayes are seventeen, and nays are zero.
We already talking about.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Uh, we'll go back to, uh, two eighty-seven. Uh, once you, Mr. Decker, I think, yeah, read, read that title again.
Bill number two zero zero, two eight seven, entitled an ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you. This bill having been read on two different days, the question now, is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Don.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gattier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ginn.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
For reasons other than what was stated, I'm voting no.
Councilman O'Neal.
No.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Camila Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Scola.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are fourteen, and nays are three. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two zero zero, two eighty-eight.
An ordinance amending Chapter nineteen, twelve-hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Parking Tax by Revising Certain Tax Rates.
This bill has been, had been read on two different days, the question now, is shall the bill pass finally? Uh, Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Don.
Uh, abstain, please.
Councilwoman Gattier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ginn.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
No.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Camila Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Scola.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes are fifteen, nays are one, and one extension. Joining all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two zero zero, two ninety-one.
An ordinance amending Chapter nineteen, fifteen-hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Wage and Net Profits Tax by Revising Certain Tax Rates.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now, is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Don.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gattier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ginn.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
No.
Councilman O'Neal.
No.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Camila Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Scola.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are fifteen, nays are two. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two zero zero, two ninety-two.
An ordinance amending Chapter nineteen, thirteen-hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Real Estate Taxes to Eliminate the Discount for Early Payment of Real Estate Taxes.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Don.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gattier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ginn.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Camila Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Scola.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, nays are zero. Joining all members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, uh, please read the title of two zero zero, three forty-seven.
An ordinance amending Chapter nineteen, thirty-two-hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Keystone Opportunity Zone, Economic Development District, and Strategic Development Area to provide for additional extensions of certain benefits for the purpose of facilitating economic recovery from the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Uh, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson, I had a note that you wanted to speak initially.
Thank you, Mr. President, but I can, uh, reserve my time until after the district council member, my colleague, Councilmember Johnson. member, my colleague, Councilmember Johnson, has an opportunity to speak on the bill. He indicated that in the chat as well.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. The Council President, um I'm asking your support for um this bill from my colleagues for a variety of different reasons. Um first and foremost, the development that will take place at the former Philadelphia Energy Solutions Refinery Site, uh moving forward as the following committed conditions with the new um purchaser of the particular site. Uh we have a commitment for um fifty percent on um construction, construction jobs for diversion inclusion, fifty percent on local job hiring from the city of Philadelphia, and fifty percent on diversion and inclusion for professional service and contracts. Also, as part of the agreement of SELL, the committee, the Hillco Company has to engage in an aggressive remediation program uh with the former PES site. Um also, in addition, there will be a community of benefits agreement as well as a robust community engagement process in which um I will be leading uh with my, my staff. Um also, this is only beginning of that particular process, meaning um the second part of this process will be a zoning overlay, um bill that will be introduced in the fall. Um during the summertime, we will work with the community organizations and residents as well as Philly thrive around um addressing the environmental concerns with the former Philadelphia Energy Solutions Site, but also making sure that there's a robust community input and discussion around this particular project. Uh we are the number one big city when it comes to poverty um in the country, and so at the end of the day, when we talk about ending um institutional racism and systematic racism and economic injustice of people of color, the best way that we can help our people are making sure that they are rising out of poverty and also making forward that they have jobs and careers to move themselves forward. And so I'm asking for affirmative vote um on this particular bill, and I thank all my colleagues for their support as well as their input regarding um the questions that were asked during the finance um hearing that took place before the bill was voted out of the committee. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman, did you let up?
Yes. Thank you so much, Mr. President, and also thank you to my colleague and the district councilperson, Councilmember Jones, uh for his remarks, and mine will echo a number of the things that he has already stated, but I wanted to state for the record that I have been in communication with my colleague. Uh I have received feedback from a number of the community organizations and groups as well as uh the local RCOs uh in that area. Uh my colleague has assured me uh that these groups and organizations, including the local RCOs, will have a seat at the table as it relates to uh the project moving forward. Uh Hillco has committed to fifty percent minority participation for the construction jobs and fifty percent local hiring as well as a community benefits agreement. Philadelphia has a twenty-six percent poverty rate among our residents, which is higher in the black areas of Councilmember Johnson's district. Uh this site is no longer being used as an environmental hazard and will bring eighteen thousand jobs to not only Councilmember Johnson's district, but to the city of Philadelphia. The environmental remediation scope includes site characterization, disposal of hazardous soil, the design of vapor mitigation, and uh where necessary, and the removal of below grade contaminated footings and foundations, and the demolition will allow for the majority of the existing facility to be recycled. Uh this will divert thousands of tons of materials from going to landfills and eliminate the need for trucks to haul certain demolished materials. Uh for those reasons, I will be voting in favor of this bill, and I look forward to working with the district council member, my colleague, Councilmember Johnson, all of the community groups that are represented in this area, as well as the environmental groups, to ensure that the concerns of the community are addressed as we move forward in this process. Uh thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Thank you to all the community groups and the environmental groups, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Lady. Um, this bill had been read on two different days. The question is now, is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Don.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gattier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye. Oh, sorry, um, aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ginn.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gutierrez Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas. Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are sixteen, nays are one. Majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two zero 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 seventy-six.
An ordinance providing for submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Road Charter calling on the police department to eliminate the practice of unconstitutional stop and frisk as approved by resolution of the city council.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Don.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gattier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ginn.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gutierrez Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes are seventeen, nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, two zero zero two zero eight.
An ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Road Charter providing for the creation of the office of the victim advocate as approved by resolution of the city council.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Don.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gattier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gutierrez Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of all members present having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, two zero zero three sixty-three.
An ordinance amending section one oh one of the Philadelphia Code entitled residents' requirements by restoring the requirement that no person shall be appointed as an employee in the civil service, including but not limited to police officers unless he or she has been a bona fide resident of the city for at least one year prior to appointment.
Mr. President, can I be uh recognized to speak on this bill before the vote?
Absolutely. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to state for the record that when I introduced this bill on your behalf a few weeks ago, uh I was very proud, uh, Mr. President, uh, to join uh with my colleagues, council members, uh, Squilla, uh, Ann Jones, and all of the members who supported this bill. Um, for the record, I want to note that this bill restores a one-year residency requirement prior to employment for all civil service employees. Now, let me state for the record the intent. The bill is designed to change and enhance the diversity and the demographics of the Philadelphia Police Department and create a force that better reflects the culture of the city it is sworn to protect and serve. Now, I do have to state for the record that I was disheartened when I heard multiple people note that if, in fact, we were to enact uh this law, that uh we would be uh putting Philadelphia uh in a position where we would not be competitive with neighboring uh cities. And I said to myself, Mr. President, if what you're saying is that we cannot find Philadelphia residents out of our one point six million population with all of the institutions of higher learning that we have here to fill positions in the city of Philadelphia, then that is shame on us, Mr. President, for not including the type of economic development, for not including the kind of education, workforce development skills that our population needs to prepare for these jobs. Let me also state for the record that this makes good economic sense for the city of Philadelphia. For those of you who don't know, we have a seven hundred and fifty million dollar budget hole that we had to close in the city of Philadelphia. And one of the ways that we're going to find a way to recoup revenue that we lost as a uh result of COVID-nineteen is by expanding our tax base, growing our tax base. That's why you just heard Council uh Member Johnson talking about creating jobs and Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson, because we need people to add to our tax base. And if we need to prepare people, let's prepare people. The people policing the city of Philadelphia should look like the city of Philadelphia. The new cadet classes coming in should look like the city of Philadelphia. And, Mr. President, I am unapologetic about noting that if you work for the city of Philadelphia, we want you to live here. Finally, let me say this, and I wasn't going to note this, but we went back to note a testimony, uh, Mr. President, uh, in two thousand uh and six. Our uh then, um, director of personnel for the city, and I want people to note this, who've been saying that the waiver process is, is not, uh, you know, enough for us to uh attract the kind of uh talent and the skill set that we need. She said it was Linda Orfinelli, Linda Orfinelli on waivers. The process, the current process, is efficient and flexible. Residency waivers, when warranted, are granted in a timely fashion. They may also be rescinded when their utility expires. I believe this process is sufficient and it meets the needs of civil service at this time. So, Mr. President, there is no excuse about why we can't find the talent that we need here in the city of Philadelphia. And if we do have to go outside to bring in new talent because there's a very specific skill set that we just can't seem to meet, we have a waiver process uh in effect. So, uh, if this has been good for District Council, uh, thirty-three, uh, they've only had to have a few waivers, but if it's good for District Council thirty-three, the majority of which is minority, why can't it be good for the city of Philadelphia? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I believe, uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
I'll speak on a majority speech, Council President.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got it, it was on this bill. Thank you. Um.
It was the last bill, Council President.
Okay, yeah, things are moving slow. Um, okay, thank you. Um, read the title, thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, I can't speak on it because I'm at the chair, so I will not do that, but I think you all know my feelings. Um, this bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Uh, Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Don.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gattier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ginn.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gutierrez Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are.
I'd like to be recorded aye on this vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Record shall reflect that. The ayes are sixteen, the nays are one. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two zero zero three sixty-seven.
An ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Road Charter relating to the creation of the Citizens Police Oversight Commission.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Don.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gattier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ginn. Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gutierrez Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla. Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are sixteen and nays are one. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, two zero zero three forty-four.
An ordinance amending title nine of the Philadelphia Code to create a new chapter nine five thousand entitled food delivery services to regulate third-party food delivery services, require certain disclosures to consumers, and provide for a limitation on certain fees charged to consumers.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Don.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gattier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ginn.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gutierrez Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla. Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark. Council President Clark?
Aye. The ayes are 17, and nays are 0. Majority of all members have been voting in in front of the bill passes. We're now going to move to the recall resolution. Mr. Decker, if you could read the title of the resolution recalling Bill Number 200298.
A resolution requiring the mayor to return to Council Bill Number 200298 and having an ordinance authorizing the bond committee to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale, provide funds toward various capital municipal purposes, providing for appropriations to the sinking fund commission for payment of such bonds, authorizing agreements to provide credit or payment or liquidity sources for the bonds in connection with issuance of the bonds, and certain other actions for the purpose of reconsideration by the council or the vote by which said bill passed council.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Green for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that the resolution be adopted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Green for motion regarding special business.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of special business at this time.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of special business at this time. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it, and the motion passes. And the clerk, please read the letter from the mayor.
The President and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am returning here with as requested by your resolution adopted today, Bill Number 200298, entitled an ordinance authorizing the bond committee to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale, to provide funds toward various capital municipal purposes, providing for appropriations to the sinking fund commission for payment of such bonds, authorizing agreements to provide credit or liquidity sources for the bonds in connection with issuance of the bonds, and certain other actions for the purpose of reconsideration by the council of the vote by which said bill passed council.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Green for motion that council reconsider the vote by which Bill Number 200298 was passed. So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Majority of all members having voted in in front of the motion carries, and the vote by which Bill Number 200298 was passed has been reconsidered. Bill Number 200298 will be placed at the end of today's calendar. There being no other special business at this time, we will return to consideration of the calendar. Mr. Decker, read the title of Bill Number 200298.
An ordinance authorizing the bond committee to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale to provide funds toward various capital municipal purposes, providing for appropriations to the sinking fund commission for payment of such bonds, authorizing agreements to provide credit or payment or liquidity sources for the bonds in connection with issuance of the bonds, and certain other actions.
Thank you. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks? Councilman Dow?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ginn?
Aye.
Councilman Hennin?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Canona Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. The ayes are 17, and nays are 0. Majority of all members have been voting in in front of the bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions for today's calendar?
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Children and Youth to conduct hearings to investigate the status of children in Philadelphia during and post-COVID-19, introduced by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution. Second.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that is adopted.
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to conduct hearings to investigate curriculum realignment opportunities within the school district of Philadelphia to ensure preparedness for post-COVID-19 career opportunities based upon Philadelphia's labor market forecast, introduced by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution. Second.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
A resolution calling on the United States Senate to adopt the funding enhancements to the federal medical assistance percentages, FMAP, as provided in the HEROES Act, House Resolution 6800, introduced by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution. Second.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
A resolution authorizing City Council Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings to review the city's response to protests in support of ending systemic racism in policing and of the Black Lives Matter movement, and to provide residents with a forum to share their experiences and make recommendations for safer and non-discriminatory policing, introduced by Councilwoman Ginn.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Ginn.
Thank you very much, Council President. Today, The New York Times released a comprehensive video of the police assault on peaceful demonstrators on I-676 on June 1st. It's 10 minutes long, and I urge all of my council colleagues to watch and review it, if you have not already. The Times puts together, in a shocking manner, what we've heard in bits and pieces, and describes a breakdown in authority and decision-making surrounding the city's response to events surrounding demonstrations against police brutality. This is not my personal opinion. For several weeks, we have had input and commentary from experts in this field who have raised alarms and concerns, especially as official accounts have grown increasingly inconsistent with the evidence. It's not just what happened on I-676. It's also the tear gassing in residential neighborhoods in West Philadelphia, where residents were not involved in demonstrations and were not given prior warning. It's the inconsistent response from our managing director about what was authorized and not authorized, and when. It's watching armed and largely white gangs assault and menace demonstrators with inconsistent response from our police. Today, I, along with Public Safety Committee Chair Curtis Jones and other members of the Public Safety Committee, call for hearings to review the unified command's decision-making surrounding the broad range of action and use of force throughout the city. These hearings will allow us to assess the unified command's response, not just from the police department, but to understand all the way through and to learn how policies and procedures must be changed to ensure that our responses are humane and equitable across neighborhoods. It is essential that, while I recognize there are multiple investigations going on, that at least one of them is public. This includes soliciting feedback and providing a forum for Philadelphians of all backgrounds to testify about their experiences and make recommendations for non-discriminatory and equitable policing even beyond the protests and the demonstrations. This is about the much deeper issues that drove thousands and thousands of people into our streets, the experiences that people have had, the everyday experiences with policing brutality, abuse, and things that are left unchecked. It will further supplement the final product of an independent review that Mayor Kenny and Commissioner Outlaw have announced that they will ultimately commission. The spirits of too many in our city are broken, and we need a truth and reconciliation process that starts with a full accounting of why things broke down once people stood up for Black Lives Matter and against systemic racism and police brutality. This council has taken on so many responsibilities in this session, from passing historic bills to end an avalanche of evictions and fundamentally alter the structure of how we're going to use our courts, to expanding labor protections for so many workers, strengthening our response to policing. And I want to thank my colleagues on council for their partnership and hard work this session. And I especially welcome the energy, integrity, and enthusiasm of our newest colleagues. But these hearings are also part of our responsibilities. It's a responsibility of oversight and of questioning when things go wrong. And it will be a first step in our ability to rebuild the public trust and to use our powers to craft policy to ensure that law enforcement works with and not against residents who choose to exercise their First Amendment rights or who simply live as black people and people of color in the city of Philadelphia. This is about racial equity. It is about the public health. It is about quality of life. And it is about the moral compass of our city and its leadership. With that, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
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 Move and probably seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Council President, this is Councilmember Thomas.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to be on the record for abstaining. Thank you, Council President.
You have a basis for the abstention?
I will address it in my speech of the majority. Thank you, Council President.
All right, yeah, you have to, the way it is now, you have to actually have a basis for an abstention.
I'll say for operational purposes, I will vote aye right now, but I would like to be noted to want to address this legislation in the speeches of the majority. Thank you, Council President. So I will vote aye for the record, but I do want to address this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. All right, have it. Resolution is adopted.
A resolution urging the U.S. Congress to appropriate funds to sustain the U.S. Postal Service and to ensure the postal service continues to function as a universal public service, introduced by Councilwoman Ginn.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Ginn.
I move for the adoption of the resolution. Second.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
A resolution honoring and recognizing Erica James as the first woman and person of color to become dean of the Wharton School at the University of Pennsylvania, introduced by Councilwoman Canona Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Canona Sanchez.
Thank you. Let's take a moment and pause and celebrate a rising star here in Philadelphia. I want to thank Councilmember Gaultier for her co-sponsorship. I move for its adoption. Second.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
A resolution authorizing the Committees on Appropriations and Finance to hold hearings to consider an independent analysis of the business income and receipts tax structure and rates, introduced by Councilwoman Canona Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Canona Sanchez.
Thank you. I move for its adoption. Second.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings to consider a program that provides broadband internet for Philadelphians to access quality schools and quality jobs, introduced by Councilwoman Canona Sanchez.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Canona Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President Clark. I know folks think we're taking a leave during the summer, but much work will be done. One of the most important, the digital divide and literacy divide that exists in the city of Philadelphia. I look forward to working with the Education Committee on all members of council as we try to close this gap so that people have, our children have access to broadband, but also that our adults, as we try to get people back into the employment sector. Thank you, and I move for its adoption. Second.
Second.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Councilwoman, those folks are disconnected from reality. Resolution passes.
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to continue to hold hearings to assess the city of Philadelphia's efforts as coordinated by the Managing Director's Office and Human Services Departments to prevent and treat abuse, addiction, and disease related to the use of opioids, introduced by Councilwoman Canona Sanchez.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Canona Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President Clark. I want to take a moment and just really thank all of my colleagues. Over the past few years, all of you have supported Councilman Scola and I. We have worked in the community of Kezington to try to restore quality of life. What we have uncovered is that during COVID, some of the structural disparities around how we invest in poor communities was further amplified. I want to thank Councilman Dow and Councilwoman, Councilmember Bass, who chairs this committee, who have gone and joined us in the community several times as we have held public hearings throughout the crisis. We have found out that many of the departments abandoned Kezington during COVID, whether it was some of the basic needs to the health, to homeless outreach, and really left our police department by themselves as they tried to respond. We have lost all the ground we have gained with the residents over the last three years. What you will see in Kezington, for those of you who want to see for yourself, is lawlessness and actions that would not be tolerated in a thorough, raw country. This is Philadelphia, the birthplace of this United States of America, and the residents of Kezington have had enough. Basta ya. We are calling on the Managing Director's Office and all of the departments responsible. We had a hepatitis A pandemic before we had COVID. We have to restore Kezington. And we, Councilman Scola and I, are committed to continue to stand with the residents and the many stakeholders, many stakeholders, that despite all the challenges, stand with us every day and try to provide services for the residents of Kezington. I am ashamed of what has happened in Kezington. I am ashamed that this administration has not figured out a way how to restore that quality of life for those residents. And I will not allow this to be the third summer where hundreds of homeless are allowed to take over our streets and be lawless and open drug air markets and earn the rest. It is time for us to invest in people. And if we've learned anything during this pandemic is that the most vulnerable will fall will fall if those of us in positions to take care of them do not stand up and check ourselves and call ourselves out. Harm reduction, warm handoffs, all of those things are hugely important as we try to meet people where they are. But in this case, people can't even come out of their own homes. The children are being traumatized. So I want to thank everybody who has joined us throughout this and say to, to everyone on council, thank you for your support. We have a long way to go before we demonstrate the humanity in folks. Thank you so much, and I move for its adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Primarily aye.
Ayes have it, and that
Aye.
adopted.
A resolution honoring the Pennsylvania Thirty Day Fund for providing immediate financial assistance through forgivable loans to small businesses locally and statewide during the COVID-19 crisis and encouraging Philadelphia's small businesses to apply for the program introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. Move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
A resolution authorizing the committee on fiscal stability and intergovernmental cooperation to hold quarterly hearings that include monthly reporting requirements to discuss the fiscal position and overarching social impact goals of the city, including and as related to the five-year plan and the reporting requirements set forth in the quarterly city manager's report and are submitted, submitted to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. Move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
A resolution authorizing the City Council of Philadelphia to create a special committee on the future economy of Philadelphia to develop policy and hold hearings to promote economic competitiveness, expansion, and opportunities for the city and all Philadelphians, introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. Move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless to hold public hearings on the impacts of COVID-19 on homelessness, evictions, and residential foreclosures, and the city's efforts to combat homelessness, evictions, and residential foreclosures, introduced by Councilwoman Gautier.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gautier.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is, is adopted.
A resolution calling on the Pennsylvania General Assembly to reverse the legalization of the sale of consumer fireworks in the state of Pennsylvania, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of all Philadelphians, I move for the, for the adoption of the resolution.
Second. Whatever you need, we
Make it stop. It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nobody opposes that. Thank you. Resolution is adopted.
Mr. President, there are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar.
Very much. Before we go to speeches, uh, one little housekeeping. Uh, Councilman Dom, uh, earlier you abstained. Uh, I know you did it in the public hearing. Um, if you just state for the record, your abstention, um, the basis for your abstention, and I do believe it is a public record.
Yes, the basis, thank you, Council President. The basis for the abstention is, I checked with the Board of Ethics, and they recommended based on the fact that I have a few parking lots, I should not vote on that bill.
Thanks. Thanks. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, that concludes our calendar for today. Wow, and next up, we will have speeches on behalf of the minority, and the chair is going to recognize Councilwoman Brooks.
I don't have a speech.
Change up. Okay. You say Councilwoman. Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, on behalf of the minority, uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I want to thank my colleagues for working on a bill to create the Office of Victims Advocates. Um, this bill will be on the upcoming, um, ballot as a charter change, and I want to say thank all of you on for voting for it. Um, for the record, the needs of victims and co-victims of gun violence is an issue that is deeply personal to me. I myself became a co-victim as a young man when I lost my cousin to gun violence. I started an organization called Peace Not Guns to address the issue of gun violence here in the city of Philadelphia. With the support of family and friends of my faith, I was able to channel that trauma and experience into something positive, which is a lifetime of public service. As a result, I feel obligated to try to give a voice to those who are often, have not had a voice. Over the last several months, the Special Committee on Gun Violence has convened roundtables and hearings on the needs of victims and co-victims led by our Subcommittee on Victims and Co-Victims of Gun Violence. What we heard loud and clear was that the community needs someone within city government whose sole responsibility is to advocate for victims and co-victims of gun violence. There are too many agencies that have contact with victims and need to do better working with victims, working together with one another. This legislation was answered by asking Philadelphia voters to add a victim advocate to the city charter. Officer Victim Advocate would do the following. Advocate for victims and co-victims, especially victims of gun violence. Facilitate coordination between agencies, providing training on trauma-informed practices and agencies that interact with victims. Ensure that victims are notified of their rights and help protect those rights. Educate the public regarding victims' issues, make policy reckon, recommendations, and put together a valuable with community representatives and stakeholders to make sure that victims and co-victims of gun violence have a seat at the table. I believe that we owe it to victims and co-victims to give them a voice within city government, and this proposed charter change would do just that. As we talk about the issue of criminal justice reform, as we talk about the issue of police reform, I also just want to remind people that we deal with an issue that has been tearing apart our city on a daily basis, and that's the issue of gun violence. Uh, I have taken too many times out of my schedule to attend a funeral of a young man who has lost his life to gun violence. I have taken too many times out of my schedule to reach out to a mother or a father to console them because they have lost a child to gun violence, and so we want to make sure that those survivors of gun violence, those victims and co-victims of gun violence and homicides have a seat at the table when it comes to the policies and the research that we are advocating for here in the city of Philadelphia. So I just want to personally say thank you to all of my colleagues, and I look forward to them as being here in the city of Philadelphia and the wider public to give a firm vote on when this bill comes up for, for a vote in November. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones. Speech.
Thank you. Mr. President, first of all, I want to thank you for your leadership over this last session. Um, critics may judge us one way or the other, but the reality is we've passed a more, um, substantive legislation in this session than we have sometimes in four years. Um, I want to also say that if you look at the speech that, uh, Councilmember Dom gave and the speech that Councilmember Brooks gave, those were very two different lenses of how they view of the future of Philadelphia, yet they voted together on many of the bills, and that is due to the leadership of the leaders in council. And I want to thank the Majority Leader and the Deputy Whip for being those kinds of ambassadors to cross aisles and deal with, um, different, um, thought processes. I want to particularly speak, I rise today, uh, to talk about the Citizens Police Oversight Committee, which will be on the ballot in November. I want to put into context, Mr. President, and thank you again for not letting this issue fade into public policy, uh, history. You kept bringing it back over and over again, trying once again in different climates and different attitudes to get some measure of relief for citizens. Um, I would say to you that if you, and there are lawyers in our body, um, and, and, and they would know that if a lawyer provides a service to a client and that client is not satisfied, that client has grievances. They can go to the State Supreme Court for disciplinary hearing. If a doctor provides a service to someone, writes the wrong prescription or medical malpractice, there is a process by which they go to a medical board and, and jeopardy is that doctor's license because they now have skin in the game because some oversight happens. If you look at us as legislators, we have an ethics committee, but we're not allowed really to, uh, review our own cases, and that's why they created the Ethics Board that we report to, right? When it comes to our police, we have to have the confidence of the citizens of Philadelphia in a process where if you feel wrong, even though you recognize that most police officers are of good character, but in those cases where you believe you've been wrong, that there is a honest broker, a honest arbitrator that will allow your grievance to be heard. If you look at all of the bills that have been passed dealing with police uh, and community policing this session, it is all designed to restore that faith. Whether you're talking about body cameras, what you're talking about, the, uh, contract process, all of this is a part of links in a chain that the citizens that are protesting weren't broken. When you look at, um, I, I think when we did the hearings, they were long, but, um, Minister Rodney Muhammad gave the best analogy ever. He, he talked about Andy of Mayberry. And he taught you, some of the young people, and particularly members may have to Google, Andy of Mayberry. But Andy of Mayberry, he lived in, uh, Andy Griffin lived in a town called Mayberry. He never carried a gun. He had a deputy named Barney Fight. Barney might have made a weight a hundred pounds dripping wet, but he had a big old gun and he was only allowed one bullet. And in courses of the town's history, bad people or bad things happened, and Andy, the sheriff in charge was confident. He was a big guy, and he would intervene and use logic because he knew the citizens well. They trusted his judgment, and he would resolve things. But as soon as Deputy Barney Fight got on the scene, he pulled that rickety gun, started shaking it because at the heart of it, he was afraid. Everybody was bigger than him, and he was really scared. So what these, uh, bills that we have, uh, attempted to, to move forward are designed to create more and, and less Barneys among the police force. People who have a relationship with the community as opposed to our viewing, being viewed as an occupying force, guardians as opposed to warriors. Um, the other thing that I think the spirit of a lot of this legislation is designed to do, uh, is that there is a thing called justice by zip code. And there's different strokes for different folks depending on your zip code. There is a measure of justice that can be administered, uh, in Chestnut Hill, but if you travel to the southwest Philadelphia, there's a whole nother level of scrutiny. There should be one set of rules for all citizens. There was a American, uh, Good Morning America had a video where a father captured a mo-, uh, a, uh, the, the recording of his son shooting hoops, Mr. President, in his driveway. He's shooting hoops like every normal pre-teen does, and you could see him look down the road and then all of a sudden hide behind his father's vehicle. And when the police car went by, he looked, saw it was safe, and then started, started shooting again. His father was disturbed by what he saw and came out and said, "Son, why did you hide from the police?" He said, "Because they are here to shoot us." So in some zip codes, the perception is that you are a guardian, you're, you're, in, in parts of my own district, you're Coach, uh, you're Coach Clark and you're, you're Co-, you're Officer, uh, uh, Jamie, uh, and, and you're viewed as a part of the community. In other parts of this city, they're viewed as people that are there to, to suppress people, tax pay, and they are guilty and then have to prove themselves innocent. You need to change this. And so all of this legislation isn't designed to come against our, uh, civil servants in blue. It is designed to make sure that they are protected too. Because, you know, every barber shop knows that if I give a cop, a charge, I might get leniency on my, my case too. So it's a balancing scale that we have to maintain. So I want to say thank you to all of those who supported of this measure, uh, Mr. President. I want to say thank you to, uh, the citizens that pushed us a little further, a little harder, and it was a bit uncomfortable at times. But here we are together, uh, and for the benefit of the city of Philadelphia. So congratulations, and I wish, um, my colleagues a productive summer because the myth, you get ready to find out, you nev-, there's no days off. There are no days off. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you very much. Very well said. Andy of Mayberry. I think that's the first in the city council of Philadelphia. Uh, thank you, my friend. Chair recognizes Councilman Gray.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Um, it's taken four hundred and one years, but I think our nation now recognizes that black lives matter. I think this body has demonstrated black lives matter, and for my African-American colleagues in this body, although you may have title of president, majority leader, or council member, when you leave City Hall, you are African-American, you are black. You're a black person before you are zoned as a council member. So black lives matter, but for my African-American colleagues, you live a black life all the time. And so not only do black lives matter, black votes matter, and today is a reminder that black votes matter. Uh, today is June twenty-fifth, and it's the seventh anniversary of Shelby County versus Holder as former, um, Attorney General Eric Holder, in which the United States Supreme Court gutted the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five. So when I say black votes matter, it also reminds me of my grandfather, which many of you have heard me talk about. My grandfather only wore a suit two times to church and to vote. So when I think about black votes matter, I think about my grandfather. And I'll be remiss in not thanking the Leadership Conference Education Fund, all voting is lo-, is local, and still I vote, uh, for bringing this information to my attention, and this is, and still I vote National Week of Action. And if I had the opportunity, council members, I would have circulated resolution, but I did not have the time to do that on Tuesday. But I wanted to bring this to your attention because we've already seen the COVID-19 pandemic's effect on our elections. It is our job to ensure that our systems are secure and work for all voters, especially when there is a crisis like our current pandemic. People should be able to exercise their constitutional right to vote and stay healthy, even during a pandemic. Residents should not have to choose between public health and a functioning democracy and exercising their constitutional right to vote. Our democracy works best when everyone participates. We must ensure that our systems work, especially when there's a crisis like COVID-19. We've seen widespread polling place closures, long lines with hour-long waits, a backlog of absentee ballot requests, machine breakdowns. This is a wake-up call for our democracy. Those tragedies cannot happen again. Congress must pass the Heroes Act, which was recently passed by the Democrats in the House, and now it's going to go over to the Senate. And we must provide to our state and local officials the critical resources to ensure we have safe, fair, accessible elections in November. Voting by mail is safe, is secure, it's effective. Many of you know the military's used voting by mail for numerous years and decades. Some of our our leaders in this country who espouse against voting by mail have voted by mail themselves. Communities have been starved of critical resources to make it easier for votes, to, for voters to get their ballots and return them in the mail. Congress must pass the Heroes Act now to ensure that states have the funding they need so every voice is heard. Seven years ago, the, the Supreme Court opened a door for discrimination in voting. We cannot allow anyone to use this pandemic as yet one more tool to disenfranchise people like my grandfather the right to vote. We'll stand up for our right to ro-, our right to vote and our voice in our democracy. We cannot shirk our duty, and we must get ready for November. We, we will be safe, and we will be healthy, and we will vote because the vote is ours. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you so much. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gautier.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for your leadership during this unique and challenging budget cycle. Um, this year's negotiations have been some of the most difficult and high stakes in our city's history. And I know that many people will be disappointed by the outcome here, especially as it relates to police funding. So I want to say to everyone who has been protesting and emailing and calling and making their voices heard that even though it may not be fully reflected in this year's budget, um, your efforts are not in vain. For the first time since the Great Recession, the city's budget does not include an increase for the police department. The nineteen million dollar reduction to the PPD is not insignificant. It's an important step in the right direction. In this precarious moment for our city, as we contend with a public health crisis that has left us with a nearly seven hundred fifty million dollar budget gap and a homicide rate that's up about twenty-five percent from this time last year, any drastic change to public safety spending represents an unquantifiable risk to the health and well-being of our communities, in particular our black communities, which have been ravaged by COVID, and they're the brunt of gun violence. I want to be clear that I strongly support the concept of divesting from police to invest in other resources to keep people safe, but I want to work over the next year to come up with a thoughtful roadmap for that and to develop alternatives that will keep local communities safe and help them to thrive. So this is where we begin. Passing the budget today allows us to begin planning for more meaningful changes to reimagine public safety and what that looks like in practice. My office has already started this work in the Third District and is going to continue. In the wake of unrest on Fifty Second Street, we convened a meeting between activists and PPP, PPD leadership. This is the start of an open dialogue in West and Southwest Philly about how policing affects black youth and to coordinate collective action towards a safe, free, and healthy city. And while I know the budget may not satisfy everyone, I want to highlight some of the important matters it does address. First and foremost, we secu-, secured an additional twenty million dollars for the Housing Trust Fund. We fought hard for this, and it is a huge win for city council, the advocates who fought side by side with us and for Philadelphia. By creating affordable rental units and funding programs that keep some of Philadelphia's most vulnerable residents in their homes, the trust fund allows us to create and maintain stability in our communities. Since I decided to run for office, my main priority has been to keep people safe in their homes, whether they rent or own. And this twenty million dollars will go a long way towards that end. This budget also restores city support of the Pennsylvania Immigrant Family Unity Project, which provides legal representation for immigrants in detention, helps keep families together, and protects communities of color. We've also set aside $25 million for the New Normal Budget Act, which includes programs to address healthcare needs, healthy food options, affordable housing, and anti-poverty efforts. And we're investing in adult education and reentry services to support residents in underserved communities as they develop their skills and acquire new ones. And I'll end by saying this. Institutional racism doesn't get eradicated by one city budget. To right the wrongs that black people have been enduring for centuries here in Philly and throughout the country, we need to take a holistic look at all of our public services and operations and address the myriad ways in which they hold up white supremacy over black lives. Achieving true racial justice in our city is going to require difficult conversations and intensive policy change, and more time will allow us to do this. This is where real change feels not only possible but within our grasp. And I know my colleagues and I have every intention of running with this momentum. I look forward to the work ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. Normally, I like to be brief, but unfortunately, that's not going to be the case today. And I know we've been in a long session, but it's been a long journey for me to get to this moment. This has been a ten-year journey for me. I decided to run for City Council at the age of 25, and now 35 years old, and I just finished my first six months in City Council. And I thought that I would take a minute just to reflect on those six months because, again, it's been a long journey for me to get here. While I am the youngest member on City Council, I've been around for a while as it relates to politics. So I've watched a lot of my colleagues and how, what they became elected officials and what they had to essentially go through. And I know firsthand, for people of color, it's very difficult for us to get to the position that we're in. I know, speaking for me personally, I had to go through two years of unemployment where I didn't have a check for myself or my family, and that was a sacrifice that I had to make and was willing to make because I believe in the process of democracy, and I believe that someone like me, being at the table, having the opportunity to participate in sessions like this and be involved in budgets like this is important for the people of the city of Philadelphia, is important for the diversity of this specific body, and it's important for the progress that we all know we want to see. I've watched my colleagues and the great work that they've done over the last six months. And I can tell you, in the beginning, before the pandemic, things were going smooth. We had a surplus of money, there were ideas floating around, colleagues were able to meet face-to-face, freshmen were able to get mentored by some of the senior members of council, and then the pandemic hit. And once the pandemic hit, it created a situation that nobody had a playbook for. Folks, we didn't know what direction to go in, and I heard so many times that we were building a plane while flying, and I had never heard that phrase before the pandemic, but I think it's the perfect way to describe not just what this body was going through, but what all bodies were going through. And then during the pandemic, we had the unfortunate George Floyd situation. And once the George Floyd situation hit, for me personally, I recognized that it would be an opportunity to see some change, not just as it relates to policing, but as it relates to black communities and a black experience in general. I don't know about you, Council President, I know you've been in this position for some time, but I'm not sure if you've ever had a colleague or a future colleague have to call you because they are involved in a personal situation with police. So, for me, coming into council, the opportunity to be a part of police reform, the opportunity to have a change as it relates to the overall black experience was something that I was salivating at the mouth fat and couldn't wait to get to. Unfortunately, this moment and the experience has been hijacked. Right now, we're seeing a movement and things taking a place, not just in Philadelphia, but all across the country. And what we're seeing is, we're seeing people advocate and fight, and what we're fighting for is the black experience. And unfortunately, black voices aren't the ones that's being heard the most. I've listened to Councilmember Derek Green talk on a consistent basis about black economics and what are we going to do as it relates to the black dollar and investing in black businesses. And I can't help but think and wonder about the irony of being black men on City Council and black women on City Council and to constantly be told what we're not doing for black people, mostly by people who aren't black. It's frustrating, Council President, and to be honest with you, again, it's been a very rough first six months for me. And if it wasn't for the importance of this work and the decisions that we have to make, specifically in the interest of people of color, I would question whether or not I would want to be a part of not just this body, but anybody that's viewed and demonized as much as this body is. This is my personal opinion, no one asked me to say this. I would have loved to have had a different vote today as it relates to the budget, but I know that we had to do the things that we had to do for the Public Defender's Office and the District Attorney's Office and the African-American Museum and even programs like City Year, which has won my heart. I take this job very serious, I'm very passionate about it, and I was even more offended to see and hear language that would suggest that we wouldn't be working this summer. I know I'm going to be working this summer. I hear folks talk all the time about people taking advantage of this opportunity, specifically businesses. But businesses aren't the only entities that are taking advantage of this moment and this opportunity. We got people who will villainize anyone to make themselves be the hero. And so, no Council President, I would not be taking off this summer. No Council President, I would not be on recess. I will be at war this summer to make sure that this moment remains and stays about black people. Thank you, Council President, I appreciate you.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Thank you. Do not believe there are any other speeches at this moment. But before I call for adjournment, I want to take the privilege of having the mic at this time, bend the rules a little bit, so.
I'm sorry, sir. I think Isaiah Thomas just dropped the mic. Councilman Thomas, I'm sorry. Thank you, Council President.
Yeah. Dropped it. Look, a lot of people don't know what that means, Councilman. Anyway. So, real quick, first of all, thank you guys so much. I know early on in the process, as Councilman just referenced, the fact that we had a significant fund balance and we were looking at opportunities for investment. There was, and I got to tell you, because I heard it and I hear, you know, some uncertainty about the group of new council members, whether or not this body would have the level of cohesion, even earlier on prior to the pandemic and prior to George Floyd. Then those things happened. Then it was even more uncertainty as to whether or not this body, and we said at the beginning of the budget process that this is probably going to be one of the most unorthodox, the most challenging, the most controversial, all of the above, to deal with a $750 million budget gap in the middle of the pandemic. And guess what, it was all of the above. It really was. But as I listen to you all today and over the last couple of days, particularly leading up to the conclusion of this process, I got to tell you, I'm just, you know, I know I'm sounding like the elder statesman, and I guess I am. I'm kind of like really proud of you guys, how you all came together, understanding that you don't necessarily, you're not necessarily in a position to achieve everything that you had wanted to earlier on in the process, but understanding that this is a process, a process that will ultimately take us to a point where we will make a difference. And I understand, because I've been screamed and hollered at and called all kind of things, protested at my house. I mean, you name it, it happened. But you do it because you want to do it, you do it because you love it, right? It's in your blood. It is in your blood because all of us can do something else in life, right? It is in your blood. So I just want to say how proud I am of you guys coming together. And the one thing I want us to do, and I'm not necessarily speaking about us, I'm speaking about the population at large. We really need to seize the moment while there's an acknowledgement about the disparities. There's an acknowledgement that a significant class, a category of individuals in this country have not been given real opportunities, have not been given the life that other individuals have experienced simply because of their color and their origin. We got to seize this moment, and I'm talking to everybody. Take advantage of the fact that, and I'm going to call it like it is, there's some guilt going around in a lot of different places. Well, if the guilt's going to now give us an opportunity to have real, meaningful support as it relates to starting businesses, a real meaningful support to getting the necessary resources or getting the appropriate education, then so be it, right? So, we will set the template, we will set the agenda as it relates to this legislative body, but we cannot do it alone. So we're asked for everybody that's genuine. I talked about Councilman Green, I talked about him on the radio the other day about where are you going to be six months from now, where are you going to be a year from now? Are you going to sustain your level of support for this particular issue and this mission? So, I know where we're going to be, I know that we're going to be focused, and I just want to say I'm proud to be a member of the City Council of 2020. Guys, you know, thank you all very much on this start, Phase Two of 2020. When we go out, I know we have a number of hearings teed up that we're going to be talking about issues, and those issues will ultimately turn into the implementation phase. So, look for it. Thank you all so much, thank you for your hard work, thank you for your commitment beyond City Council because this is the only thing that people see in public. They don't see what we do in life outside of the City Hall, where we're not even in this building today, right? But life outside of what they see on television, that's where the real work begins to start. So guys, thank you all so much, I love you. Keep this hard work, and we're going to handle our business and the citizens. Look forward to working with you all to move this forward. So with that, I'd like to recognize Councilman Jones for motion to adjourn. Councilman Squirrel, I'll see you a little later on this evening. Councilman Jones.
Thanks, Mr. President. Councilman Jones just had to step away real quick. So I'll move the council stand adjourned until Thursday, September 10th, 2020, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you, it's been moved, and probably second, the council stand is adjourned until Thursday, September 10th, 2020, 10:00 a.m. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Ayes handed, motion concussed, thank you all very much. See you guys soon. Thank you.
Thank you, great job, Council President.